Evening everybody, welcome to the November Planning Committee meeting.
Evening, Chair.
As it's promised this day, we would like to hold a one-minute silence for those who can stand. Good day, in case. Thank you. We're going down with the sun and in the morning.
We will remember them.
We will remember them. Thank you. I think I'll be speaking. One more line, thank you. For this, perhaps. But did that noted?
Noted, yes.
We could welcome our new councillor, Tony Allen, to Planning Committee. I hope he hears enough tonight that he'll want to join the committee.
Saying anything.
Thank you. First of all, declarations of interest, received declarations of any personal or judicial interest under consideration on the agenda. Councillor Sturbridge.
Just in case, if you ever have a planning meeting to do with Buckingham, I'll declare that I'm on Buckingham account. On the same opportunity, I'll get to discuss something which is considered my community. I had one last week, actually, and I got to consider one item. That's the first item for about four years.
Quick and move on, please. And then, anybody else? Actually, three minutes to review the minutes of the Planning Committee held on the 14th October. Didn't run agreement? Not in such a way. We have a second by councillor, I suppose, seconded by councillor Rappel. Thank you. Regularise that. Fourth item, budget, received report from the Plans and Projects Manager. You'll see there is a one-page document. This specifically regards the neighbourhood plan because the other three budget lines have been done, whereas office speak.
Yes, so adequately explained by councillor Cole. We need to look at our budget for next year, so first of all, on the two, 31st of March. The only line relevant to this committee is the part of the neighbourhood plan. By that time, we, anything that should be due to do is the referendum, which is paid for by the bucks anyway. So, as members will see from the report, it's really just to ensure that we have some funds set aside to market and advertise it, to excellent promotional stuff we need, so that we can do some other meetings and so forth. And any support we might need from O N H O M A to manage any misinformation, otherwise that can happen, as did at Beckinsale's referendum, add plus a contingency. So, we've calculated and we feel that with what's been made at the previous meeting recently, that ten should be sufficient and be plenty of contingency for next year.
Thank you, Steve. Are you able to give us an indication yet what the total budget is going to be?
My total of the planning, I'm sorry, Mark, I probably didn't get asked the other day.
Yep.
I haven't had that much into that way. I think it's worth bearing in mind that the 2015 one was £80,000.
Yes, it was, yeah, yeah. Councillor Sturbridge.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Eamon. I've just been aware, we can always take a decision at precept to take it out. With the evidence, councillor, and I just worry that that might not be enough money and we can't really predict what it is. So, I'd propose that we put £12,000 in, which can, as we get to precept, we'll know more about what it is in that cost and we can amend it afterwards, which is our only chance to put it in. And if we miss it, and then we have to go to contingencies or something for it, contingencies that we set amount of money and it's biggest expenses council will have with this committee and it's improved doing now.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have to, are we then to do that increase of £500,000?
As the committee can ask for each other, particularly fill in numbers which they increase it, then that's their priority. This is, of course, a recommendation to the resources, so it's got the precept meeting ready for full council, so, thank you.
So, proposed by Councillor Sturbridge, seconded by councillor Dominy.
No, I'm a natural question. Is there a reason that you did put in more?
Only because, as I say, the only, we don't think of any significance to the referendum, we don't pay for anywhere. This is to, as I said, it is to pay for any non- material, we need the pop-ups, the advertising we need to do, some advice discussions, O N H O M A, and then contingency on top, so. I would not bat against an increased provisional budget.
Thank you.
So, we'll just have a second. The first councillor, Sturbridge, has proposed it. Seconded by councillor Davies, thank you. Martin.
Thank you. We budget, as it says in the on the paper, two and a half thousand for last year. Sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five, so let me. The year-to-date, that includes the consultation and our consultants, does it?
I believe that's come from some.
So, is that included in that year-to-date figure or is that on top of that?
The actual budget that was agreed for last year was 2010. In fact, I don't know where that.
Which means the consultants were paid for elsewhere, then?
I suspect they were.
Okay. So, in which case, why aren't we doing the same sort of thing this year? Rather than showing it within our particular planning budget. And it's not going to be as much this year because we've already gone through that high-intensity consultation, et cetera.
I suspect it was because there is the neighbourhood plan's a full council item, a project, and that the the additional funds will accrue historically from there and growing the earmark reserve. So, the reason this shows us £10,000, it looks like it's smashed the budget on our accounts. If we take it out of the earmark reserve, through that account, it shows, which is why I gave you the true figure.
Yeah, just to say, I mean, number, two things. One is the resources committee didn't amend budgets of committees, as otherwise we would be popping out the committees. And the second thing is that the precept, and there'd be, have to be a recommendation at precept if that money's not needed, but not to put it in now, and then you can't, we could try to put a recommendation in at precept, but then we'd have to have a long discussion about every item at precept, by which time we'll open the floodgates to discussions about whether we want washers on gateways. And I've been through the precept meetings like that, but finish at one o'clock in the morning. Not joking. So, I would hope that it would be supported because if it isn't supported, it will be a record that we didn't do it and it can be taken out at a later date. If your precept meeting does not, it will make a recommendation at that meeting that we've done this and it is not needed, in which case it won't go on the precept. It's just a safety valve, really.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, what is the £2,000 for? So, I can't.
The, sorry.
What is the extra £2,000 that's being requested? What would that, what would that be for?
Do you mean between what I recommended and what?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Well, I think Councillor Sturbridge suggested that this is a contingency which we've got in the budget already.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's good to have, we've learned that it's needed in that neighbourhood plan so far. We have to have it in, but I wouldn't bat against our link rates of £12,000. Probably says, if we look to get near the time we have information.
Yes.
Anyone else want to speak or we can go to the vote? It's been proposed by Councillor Sturbridge, seconded by Councillor Davies. All those in favour? Something to count on. I meant that's seven votes to do, isn't it? Eight votes, yeah. Any one against? One, two against, extensions. Did we have three there? Two, two big problems. Yeah, extensions. Thank you, that's kind. Actually, five, actually, five, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Ballymore's and Buckinghamshire neighbourhood plan. You'll be aware that, as we all, at the council meeting last Monday, that we agreed to a budget of £25,000 to cover site queue and defensively build also, some of that money can be used on the neighbourhood plan in relation to employment areas, so. Steve, any other comments on this?
No, I had a meeting with two of you today to have a look and see where we are with the tremendous amount of work that's involved. It's been done well, but I spoke with Louise just to get an idea of making sure no duplication, but also to make sure there's nothing being missed and flung through the cracks. Very much hope that at some point next week, I'm on the ground side, at some point next week, I'd like to hold a, the next neighbourhood plan working group, so that you can have a series of recommendations to consider.
Yeah, firstly, thank you for the work that both yourself and Tony and the team have been doing on the neighbourhood plan. There's lots of things been going on while we, meetings about the detail of it, which has been quite difficult and I think we should accept that that's been difficult. One of the things that I think the point was made about looking at the action in Beckinsale. Honesty is pickle. The Buckingham Beckinsale neighbourhood plan was challenged by a organisation within the community. And what happened was because of the rules around governance, it left both Buckinghamshire Council and the town council in Beckinsale, the parish council, unable to actually engage in that discussion. Somehow, the rules have vented them for doing it. Now, my talking to councillors in Beckinsale, that wasn't a very good experience for them. They felt very frustrated that this organisation decided to put out information which was in the plan, not in the plan. Now, what I understand is the situation now, it's the same people who put the plan out, they can now just do another plan. What I understand is that, through my research, is that it's very unusual for a new plan to be submitted within two years. It'd have to be exceptional circumstances and a new plan would have to engage, would have to show that it was notably different than the previous plan, which I think they've managed to make difficult. The other thing is the Buckinghamshire plan, which hasn't shown signs of being a made development plan at this stage, which means that whatever we think about it, that leaves, leaves that community without a local plan and completely rely on the MPPF. And that we need to be minded to all those things. And in saying that, talking about it, I think it would be worth discussing at some point before we get to a point where we can't discuss it, about what the outcomes that was, so we can normally discuss it about it and think about the political objectives of the Buckingham neighbourhood plan, what it achieves, what it doesn't achieve, and come to a consensus within the Planning Committee, a recommendation to council at that point, about how we feel about it. It appears that that was politically managed, well-managed, and we need to be minded to the fact that we have invested a lot of Buckingham town councils precept into this and we have a duty to make sure that we do our best thinking in agreement, so that we can be in a position that there is possibility that we put the best information over. Lastly, that I'm sure that is going on with our consultants is that that information about the legalities of the challenge, which was legal, or the difficulties of the legalities of the town council would be better, being able to defend their plan, is discussed. So, that not just what I've said, which I believe to be quite true, but I am not an officer of this council and I think it's important that we do discuss that in an open meeting in case there's some decisions that we jointly would want to recommend to town council to avert any possibility of someone coming in and doing that to us and then the town being open to development from anywhere because the Buckinghamshire plan doesn't look like being a made plan for some particular time. Unless they surprise us and announce from either it's going to be a made plan. I don't think that's a good case.
Thank you, Robin. I will reassure members that our planning consultants, O N H, have been fully involved in the back ends field and the back and they are briefing us, keeping track of the data, Steve, perhaps that could be an item for the working group next week just to make absolutely sure how we present it.
Yeah, and actually, they have started to give us feedback on this. What happened was that this information led to the referendum failing, it was voted down, the plan voted down. So, a lot of work we've been talking to us about is how we can manage English information, which is what I've mentioned in the, in the previous report. But also so that we can make sure we highlight the significant advantage of having a plan, opposed to not having a plan.
Yeah, of course, the Beckinsale everyone was centred around green bulk, because we don't pass here, so. But there was, as Robin quite correctly said, there was a brief which was working against the plan.
Robin, just to come back to say that I'm quite happy for the, it's the pro, for the people who are best in touch with it, that being the working group, carry the information, but I do feel that we need to be guided through the chair of the office and bring it back here at an early stage to discuss it because there's a political issue here, if there's a concern there, we must discuss it in a committee, not full council, not the right place to discuss complicated stuff like that, and come to a recommendation after a discussion, rather than go to full council, where many of the people on the council won't have been in touch with the neighbourhood plan in the same way this committee has, and then come up and argue about the way to go forward without the knowledge that we've got in this room, which is the people who have been dealing with it, generally. And I think it is a high-risk thing and if we didn't flag it up, and it may be a high risk, not at all. But to say it and not to do it.
We have, we have flagged it up, but if it develops, I think if we consider, the working group is coming, we will consider it and make the force back to this committee.
Thank you, there.
John?
Yeah, just to clarify, I was going to say this directly. In Beckinsale, we've seen a group that was campaigning against the neighbourhood plan as opponents. But because of the town council wasn't able to respond to the suggestions. Well, I don't know what Beckinsale has, but here in Buckingham, we have Buckingham society. And I'm sort of independent of the town council. Yes, I would hope that similar threats village in Buckingham. Then, at the very least, Buckingham society might be more interested about the counter. We're just pointing out, we're most of our, I'm actually having a neighborhood plan, so that during earlier independent of the town council, probably smaller areas, maybe, but those are around the tables. But the actual board would count in Buckingham society. If the Buckingham society, we had to take on that role if it's required. If not, then we may want to consider setting up a, I don't know, Buckingham Yes or something, and a group now in order to rebuff any, any suggestions that might be trying to undermine the excellent work and deep work that's going to develop in the neighbourhood plan. So, that's one option. I'm glad it's going to be discussed at greater length next working group meeting. It's clear that some of these people are involved. And there are the others, external groups involved in this too.
So, this committee can turn to that working group.
Yeah.
Report back on this. Thank you, Robin. Thank you for your input. Just to verify.
At that time, what John says is quite worthy and that we would discuss that again at that point.
Thank you, everyone. Can we move on to planning applications then?
Your turn.
Oh, thank you. Judge, the night is 27th November, Rome, which is in St Albans Field. So, again, another third quick application after having moved in. Household application for conversion of carports, studies. I've been taking photographs on private, chum, Catherine, certainly a little commitment. But you'll be aware, the problem is that the household that retrospectively converted the carport into a living space and is now known as a hall to put a car on the carriage of property, it's a three-bedroom house. I'm just going to let you know what we've got, any more on that. Strange thing is that highways have passed, that you know, a national hall, it's a no. We've done an assessment and there's no problem with parking. Footpath across the front in the photograph which we sent to everyone, is footpath 36, public footpath 36, and obstructing a public footpath, not just a nuisance, it's against the law. It's against section 28 of the Town Police Clauses Act 1847, which is causing obstruction to any footpath, section 137 of the Highways Act, obstruction of free passage on a highway, and section 72 of the Highways Act 1935, driving on any footpath or side of a road that is made or set a path for use of pedestrians. So, everything they've done at the moment makes it part, parking of a car anywhere near the property illegal. There isn't room in front of the properties, just the breathing spaces between each driveway too, too short to accommodate the length of a car. I know that because I've tried to park my line over there, but there isn't room, the other hand, driveways both sides. So, it's up to members. John, then, then the Buckingham's as well.
I think this falls into that category of you don't want to be getting. Basically, so obviously, this has got to be stopped.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
The Buckingham society would agree with that. We think it's doubly regrettable that it's retrospective, as ever, it's so unfair on neighbours and indeed, there's a very good objection from a neighbour, pointing out the huge disadvantages to the neighbourhood. It is really contravening the immunity of existing residents. Going to the highways report, I mean, it is flabbergasting actually, that they can't even put their minds to parking on streets. And by contrast, it just shows you that if you go to different people, you get a different answer. Because I noticed there's a highways report on another planning application coming up for all the house and they go into some detail on parking, which, why can't they do so on this? I mean, it's really negligence of duty, in my view, and hopefully the Buckingham societies. But we definitely object to this, doubly so because it's retrospective.
Thank you. Yeah, we did measure the distance from the new front wall, it's 2.5 metres, which is even within the width of the car under parking standards, parking standards of five metres by 2.5, it's 2.5 long. I think it's also worth pointing out that the next door carports, you can get two cars under there because the carports extend the rear of the property and you can actually park your nose out near the back of the property. So, you can get two cars in tandem, which is why they were designed like that by the builders. So, what they've done basically is just said, no, we're not moving away from our parking, we're going to park on, park somewhere to park on the street.
Yeah.
Martin and then John.
I think this has to be seriously highlighted in our reply because the estate was built in such a way to utilise those carports and not to have them on the road or worse, pavements. You know, then you try and get buggies along and everything else and it just compounds the whole issue. So, we must rebuff this very strongly, really, and even more so because it is retrospective.
Yeah.
Of course, a huge danger of being that, this is approved, everyone else is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, two things. One is, this is obviously going to cause conflict between neighbours and that's never a good thing. And saying you want to buy the car for it, as this, not the, this is not, this is not the very kind of situation that we're in. Should have rescued the first place. I can't imagine it hasn't infringed that particular, it's a red source.
Anyone else? In that case, I will propose that we object to this and I'll acknowledge the input Catherine Davis in looking up these three sections, include those in it, also, everything that's been said tonight about the fact that a three-bedroom house, demands two parking spaces within the coverage, et cetera, et cetera. And as John said about labour, the message being done, so I suppose our seconded by, all those in favour? What's your opinion about? Extension. Sorry. We don't want them ever looking on.
No, I, I, I just.
You say quiet.
I'm always so passive.
Second item, Starbucks, Crossley, London Road, you'll recall, a time ago in permission, they had included provision of six electric vehicle charging spaces, but they then discovered it wouldn't, the high phase enough electric supply to the site, which they've now got. They don't come back with the provision of six electric vehicles through three charger pits. Any comments?
Happy to support it. Yep.
Thank you. Martin?
It does annoy me. Why do electric vehicle owners have to get premium spots right outside? Why can't they shift them away somewhere else, down the road somewhere? Thank you.
Presumably because the electricity needs to come from a building somehow. And if they put them right where they have the sign car park, then they're going to have to dig, dig up too much. Car park, I can't believe it's done, just unpractical times.
Make a flip in front and just put a diesel generator.
Thank you. Anyone else any views on it? Thank you. I propose that we have an objection, all those in favour, sorry, seconded by, all those in favour? We're pressing the hands again, just checked. There's a game. Martin?
Just because he can, right?
Robin, stay. Thank you. Number three on our planning applications, 24 London Road, we did in July raise concerns and it has been re-routed, the chimneys have been moved. At the time, we couldn't do a lot about it because it was not the conservation area, but the tax comeback is a fuller application for single-story roof extension, front porch extension, raising a roof and rear-facing door. The chimneys are still missing and I'll go to Fran.
This just seems bizarre to me that they've just put a new roof on. And now they want to take that roof off and put another one on with an extension. It just, it makes no sense whatsoever. And it still hasn't got any chimneys.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Well, as you might expect, a city of champions with chimneys is particularly disappointed that the chimneys have been removed and that work has started on this property, extensive work, without planning commission being given. Those three houses or four houses at the top of London Road there, they, they do reflect a certain period of architecture.
Those three houses or four houses at the top of London Road there, they they do reflect a certain period of architecture um in Buckingham and and this undoubtedly, it looks like a sort of dumpy. I don't quite know what, how to describe it, but it it's certainly lost its its rhythm and its um and its appearance within the street scene. So we would certainly object to it within the street scene. The the rear elevation just seems um overpowering. It it faces the school playgrounds, I think, but um uh I I would say this was over development. And I noticed looking at portal this afternoon that the ecology officer is quite cross because they haven't done a bad survey. Um, well, I don't think that will prevent anything, but I think this is really and I think the society really believe that this sort of application goes against the design codes that are being carefully worked out for neighbourhood plan. And it it's just disappointing that applicants don't take notice of it.
Thank you very much. Carolyn, John?
Well, I'm wondering if this is a penalty to nature. But I'm not sure there are any grounds for us to object to a common change.
Thank you.
All right, I'm telling you.
I should have my stay there. Um, I agree with Karen about the loss of chimneys. Um, it's also noticed that the application was um made on the twentieth of October and the African agent espresso architecture ticked, no, the work has not started yet. It's been up to some weeks at that stage. Um, my concern about street scene, spoiling that chimneys is like looking at um the back of the house, we've got this dreadful dormer with a huge air flap roof. Might get the back of the house, but that looks over the playing fields, playgrounds, the school. Um, so children, staff, parents are going to be looking at this. I think it's a monstrosity personally. The whole shape of the house has been changed. The hips have been made shorter. I know that the gable is not subservient, but it is a massive, massive gable. Um, I think everything is wrong about this design.
Yeah.
I, my proposal is that we oppose this application on the grounds that um everyone's expressed, seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? That is unanimous or not? Can we say that unanimous except for?
Yes.
I know. Maybe carry with one abstention.
Yeah. Right, um. Number four, number one wagons garden, between Chalmers Close and Southfield, Lane is there, three miles out and to the back of the sixth apartment building, the Latin. Household reapplication, addition of double doors and a junior balcony to the second floor, bedroom, north west elevation. Um, won't be overlooking anyone particularly. Uh, Tony, by the way, you you're quite entitled to speak at the meeting. You can't vote at the moment.
I will.
Thank you. Um, so there we are. You've seen Catherine's report on it. Anyone have any comments?
No.
No? In that case, I would propose we have no objection. Seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? And we start. You'll bring.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, yes. Carry one abstention.
Sorry, two abstentions.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that, John.
I'm saying two.
Two abstentions. It's still carrying. Number five is Nine thread's Lane, uh up on Grace Hill. With the household application for an erection of a single story rear extension. Again, we have all seen Catherine's report on it. Have any comments on this? Carolyn?
No, the society has nothing, no objections to it.
Yeah, they've got a large garden there.
Yeah. Doesn't swallow street scene, doesn't even add to the property.
There are no other comments? In that case, I propose no objections. Second debate, Anthony. All those in favour? It's Karen, everybody except Robin. Thank you. Right, number six is Bulldozer House, Bernie Close, um opposite the library and our office in particular, Catherine's office. Converted existing undercroft to number, uh to one bit, one bit, ground floors, residential, direction of bin store and cycle store. We have had this before in various forms. Now come back again. Carolyn, have a short back in society. It has got to be on.
Well, we do have a few. I think we think it's really uh overcrowding the site. Um. Um, one of the worst elements of this new design, which I think is probably rather better than the previous one. But the the security must be a a port. I'm surprised the police crime and prevention people haven't actually commented on it yet, perhaps because they haven't had notice. But there is an a huge window giving onto a little passage at the back, which is completely un-unoverlooked, if one could say that. Uh, it is open to crime. And we think that is a big disaster for for this particular element of the whole parkhouse. We can see there's some advantages in putting the bin storage behind the wall. They were proposing to boost the wall. But we come back to an overcrowding of the site, loss of amenity space, crime. Beg begging, I think, for burglary and and people not overlooking it. So we would object with minor, minor objection. We can put it that way. But this is the property in which the highways commented at huge length about agreeing central to the town and not needing parking, which is all fair enough. So why don't they look at every application with that amount of detail?
Anthony?
Um, in terms of the window, of course, um if you're inside the thing and looking out to that window, you're faced with what looks like about a three metre high wall, only one point two metres away. One, that's pretty horrible, but but not aesthetically, but also, of course, the loss of life must be quite considerable.
Yeah, it's the only large window.
Correct.
Yeah, good point. I'm picking up what Carolyn said about um immunity space. Buckingham Labour Plan Policy D H E six, this provides good outdoor space, which not only this property, but the rest of them now will lose if this is to go ahead. The other thing we picked up was the bin store, which is proposed just to erect the bin store. As you can see, the photograph Catherine took on page twenty four, uh it will still be on gravel. You've got heavy bins, wonder if they're going to sink into the gravel and the men are going to struggle to get them out of the doors, but surely surely that should be paid. Um. Yes, we picked up as well on the security aspect. And this notice has not yet been posted for this uh development, so maybe that that hasn't reached a police yet. Um, but all these points could be made. This this committee is nine to object to. Does anyone have any comments? In that case, I'd, sorry, Fran.
I just think that um who'd want to have the communal bin so close to their bedroom as well? And it's it's um, it's it's just, it's it's over development, it's overcrowding. Um, um, I can't see because of the that undercroft is supposed to be where the bins are. The bins are currently um out and overflowing all over. Um, going close in in the car park spaces, as should be. Um, and can't see them eating it.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about.
No, can't do it.
Nothing we can do about the commercial bins because they're they're not part of this.
But they're, no, they are. They're they're some of those.
On the left hand side of the photograph are flats. Other ones, the other side, they they can quite easily go in and out of these places.
Okay. Um, Ania?
I think that, sorry, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Sam, but it seems to me that this is a low quality flat that is being produced. It's not, it is contrary to our desire to see high quality development because I mean, it's going to be dark and damp and you haven't got a view and you're next to the buildings. I mean, who would want to live there unless somebody is somebody who has no other options?
Yes.
It's not the kind of thing we want really, is it?
Thank you. So, John?
Yeah, for me, it offers that kind of ideal, like an indoor outdoor space, which could provide a space for the kids to get together from those flats. So a couple of sofas in there, it'd be great. And I just think to turn it into a flat is, I think, a great over development. And if it was, if it was always planned to be this way, why would we get in the first in the first show? Because it is a slightly odd thing, let's be clear. Um, you know, in other places that would be a carport, of course, it can't be given the access to the building. Um, I, no, I don't. Still like.
But the original approval, of course, it was the story of the bins and cycle.
Yes.
Somebody's been reading, basically.
Actually moving everything out, just building up all the empty space.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I forgot to mention that we also thought that height of the ceilings would be particularly low when you look at the undercroft. So it's it's another element that makes it an undesirable living quarters.
Add it to what Ania said, that's a very good point. If no one else wants to speak, then I propose we object for all the reasons that have been raised tonight. Seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? I think that's, yes, everyone except Robin. Okay. Um, number seven, amended plans. We have seen this before. This is an application for a cattery, charity cattery at Fortin, Bortonville, fourteen Bortonville. Um. There are buildings there already, but they're apparently at this moment not being used, but the applicant wants to foster cats in this. And this is what the application is about, the change of use aside from residential, running out to C three, mixed use of residential with cattery. Um, we've put that perspective of buildings as well, aren't we?
Yes, totally, because she does it for for the protection.
All right.
Australia's already, but that's that's a charity. And what she wants is a business.
Yeah.
Uh, doing, you know.
Right, so what we need to note is that um after the first application in May twenty twenty four, Catherine Crilling, who is the senior licensing officer of Buckinghamshire Council, posted on the planning board for that there is currently no licence in place that's addressed under the regulations and to operate a business supporting cats without holding a licence is an offence under section thirteen of the Animal Welfare Act two thousand and six. Cats can only be boarded in suitable purpose built cattery units, even with the home environment. And there's a lot of conditions. Um, John, Miss Crilling asked the applicant to get in touch with them uh to discuss this. The applicant hasn't done that. She has put in amended plans, but there's no implication which is implied that the L I A R X. Um, so if we were to approve this, we would be going against the law, so. Martin?
While this is a very admirable um thing to do, um and notwithstanding the law side of things, this is the middle of a residential area and I don't think it's the best place to go ahead with uh such a business, really. It's not it it's not conducive to that uh row of houses and the surroundings. Um, maybe it was the the end of a terrace that may be better, but not slap bang in the middle. So um for other reasons that you've you've said, I'm not in favour of this uh going ahead in in any way, really.
Yes, it's been operated for two and a half years, right? It's a charity in those buildings.
Yeah.
Now that.
She wants to up the ante even more now. So, you know, that's, no, that's broad line now and we found out other information, so from me to know.
Okay, Jenny? Oh, sorry.
Um, so we're looking up, has there been neighbours um objections? No, nothing?
Not yet.
Right, no one else? Um, in that case, I propose that in view of what we've heard about legal requirements that we've suggested this application, seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? So everyone.
Maybe some of the licensing.
That's a good one. Everyone agrees with that.
Yeah.
Well, not even subject to, even if they do approve it, I still object to it.
Yeah. Yes, of course, that's the point we must put in, yeah, as you say. It's it's the concern that, you know, it's developments in the middle of the
It's a housing.
Residential area.
Yeah, residential, yeah.
Um, item eight, White House Farm, Borton Road, it's come back to us because it was originally which is an agricultural development, but the new building says the planning officer is so different from the Dutch farm the mere notification, agricultural notification is not appropriate. And it's come back for us, um exactly as it was before, as replacement buildings, with one exception, the solar panels have disappeared. And members actually at the meeting room, we agreed to this, we've proved that this noted um almost congratulated the applicants on the solar panels they're using. So. Karen?
We have expressed exactly those those views. We felt this was planning officer being particularly pedantic, actually. Um, and if if the applicants who live, as I understand it, opposite this barn are happy to have solar panels facing them and not infringing on their amenity, we thought it was an excellent thing to do. Uh, not not infringing on anybody else except themselves, possibly, and it gives them far better electricity. We really felt this was a strange approach from the planning office, very retrograde.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment? Well, I'm going to propose that we have no objection, but with the writer that we're disappointed to see the solar panels have disappeared from the platform, we'd like to see them um put back. That's my proposal, Anthony?
Yeah, sorry.
I'll nod you for it. Yeah, it's very warm here. We're falling asleep.
Hypernation setting.
All those in favour? Thank you. So that's everybody. Good, um then. Number nine, Locklear Parish, this is Landmark Wallup Drive and Oscar Road, a game. There's no matters. Now, what's happened since um we objected to the variation of condition thirteen waste water drainage, um which we objected to at the last, one of the last planning committee meetings, this has now come back as amended plans and information because the applicant has changed his application from a hundred and sixty three down to a hundred and fifty three houses to accommodate larger category two plots within the same area. All the maisonettes have been removed, additional landscaping has been provided. Plots are being shifted further from the central edge of service integrity. And more landscaping has been added within the frontage, marking of the shared circuits, Loop Road in the centre of the scheme. Uh, but it makes Morton Parish Council and Oscar Parish Meeting have objected. Um, I'll quote what Lady Mina Scott said. The Oscar Parish Meeting um noted the housing number has been reduced to a hundred and fifty three units, ten percent less than the hundred and seventy houses proposed to the committee at the outlines at that line at planning stage. Before setting aside the considerable time necessary to review the documents, respectively asked to clarify occasion on the following point. Reducing the number of ten percent by ten percent is undoubtedly material change. This material change is an offset with the allocation, which, as you know, requires at least a hundred and seventy dwellings, requirements specifically insisted on on by the planning inspector. By any standards, this amounts to a new planning application and the process of accepting a re-submission with a material change to the scheme more than a year after the expiry date uh set by condition two of the outline planning permission. uh, set by condition two of the outline planning permission unlawfully keeps the outline planning alive. Um, Lady Scott, they've asked the planning officers for that to be clarified. She hasn't heard back, but as you've heard, an amended application has come forward. Um, obviously, what happens inside these state is not of, of interest to us because, you know, we're, we're a neighbouring parish. But what might be concerning is that suddenly seventeen houses have disappeared from the original application of a hundred and seventy. Those could be dumped on us. Robin?
Well, I commend her and those people saying, uh, about the change because I hate uh, planning creepage and amendments. So good for them to say that, you know, that's too much of a change. Go back to the drawing board and bring it all together in one big bundle again.
Hmm.
What I, I know the inside, uh, uh, and the types of housing is nothing to do with us, but it is a shame that they've lost the masonettes, which we are screaming for in this area, not just Buckingham Town. So, um, they've kept the larger ones, so maybe the traffic's going to be, you know, as bad because masonettes may not have as many, uh, inhabitants, uh, in them. But there we go. Um, I would like to have seen the, the masonette stay, really. I think they'd be more in suited to our area.
Unfortunately, we, we, that's outside our.
I know, we've got nothing to do with it, yeah.
Yeah.
Such is life.
Um, Anya?
So, um, I happen to be at a board members briefing on this one today. I am not sure, can say this later in the, or I can say it just as well now rather than in my councillor's report. I am not entirely convinced, I've learned an awful lot, which is of interest to this meeting. My understanding is that David Wilson Homes has made these amendments because otherwise they simply can't make the thing fit. So, um, there are, I mean, there were problems in the outline condition on the C two. There were issues with the biodiversity plan, there were also, you know, net biodiversity gain, et cetera. And my understanding is that they have taken this on board and therefore provided these so that it can fit the outline conditions. I, uh, just, just to be on the safe side, I will at this point withhold my opinion on this, but, um. Yeah, so that's all. And the, um, only thing of any, you, I suppose, immediate use I've learned because I asked when they were likely to bring this to Strategic Sites Committee. It's not going to be in November, they were aiming for December. Now, that meeting is on the sixth of December, that's less than four weeks from today. I somehow, this is my own personal opinion, I'm not seeing how that can be done and I think the officers weren't entirely sure that would happen. But that is their ambition. So I think that's, uh, I'm quoting now. Um, yeah, that's the, the only material additional information I have on this.
Thank you. Perhaps the reason they can't get quite the number of houses they thought they're going to do it is because a number of the objectors over the last two or three days have pointed out the site is not eight point eight hectares, but eight point two hectares. There's somewhere one point six per hectare, which is quite a lot of land, isn't it? Eight and a half, it disappears. Um, I don't know, but that's, that's what a lot of the objectors are pointing out. Um, there has been a lot of also objecting, again, about this net biodiversity game, um, um, other matters that they think will change because of the different layout of the, the estate. Yeah, Karen?
Well, I would just like to, to add some of this information. There's a very detailed report from a professor, Tim Shreve of Brooks University on the biodiversity elements, uh, pointing out quite clearly they don't, they're not correct. And this, this has been going on for, well, fully three years. Every time they come back with amendments, they're not correct. And it's just an absurd situation. In, in addition to that, I, I did download the Anglia Water comments. Um, and it's quite clear, and maybe this, this number six meeting is waiting for Ofwat to say where the, uh, upgrade in their investments can happen. And then it was, Anglia Water point out that they have several schemes they wish to upgrade, but this area is obviously, as we all know, um, hasn't got capacity to take new sewage. Um, so whether Offwat will approve it or not, perhaps if they do, that will bench the matter for
Mm-hmm.
That the applicant, David Wilson, perhaps?
Yes, that's great of the point. So as you, as you said, as we've already objected to, one, one thing, of course, um, I think Fran made the point very well about, you know, was it Fran or Martin about they ought to just start again with everything? The first application, twenty three oh one six three six is five hundred and eighteen pages. The other one is two hundred and sixty nine pages. I said pages, um, comments, comments on, on the portal, which is massive, you know, trying, trying to bridge for all that. And I think what Martin says is absolutely right, they really ought to go back to around zero and start again and I think that's what makes Morton and, um, Oscar are hoping for as well.
Yeah.
So no one else has got anything to say? I'm going to propose that we object to this change on the basis that, um, doesn't conform with what the planning inspector quoted, quoted at least a hundred and seventy dwellings. Um, and then we have concerns that seventeen houses that are not ready to be built could be foisted on to the parish of Buckingham, um, to meet the housing, housing demands that the inspector himself said had to be met. So that's my proposal, seconded by Anthony, always in favour? That's everyone. Thank you, our hands are a little bit tied on that, there's a lot, lot of things that, that everyone said that are actually beyond our remit and, um, I think also would, would not be courteous to our neighbouring parishes if we interfered in internal things, but thank you very much, everyone, that, that's very helpful tonight. Um, and of course, our original objection about the Anglia Water Offwat situation still stands. Probably when we reply, just mentioned that George, planning officer's attention back, back to that. We wanted to make that objection. Um, not a consultation, did you well? Number eleven, I think Charles Close, we don't have to because this is an application for a specific law for this, but compared to the ground to habitable spaces, already being refused even before it got to us. Um, and a planning application, full planning application has to be made in its place. And I think that Catherine will keep reminding us, we told you so. Getting more and more of this something, so it's wasting everyone's time, money and effort.
Yes.
Finally, planning application, number twelve, um, I said the Trade Art Lane, Maturer, that was just trimmed, that's all, that's the University of Buckingham application. We're already dealt with that, differently defined by you now, so there was no objection from us on the tree, obviously. Thank you, uh, planning decisions. Um, seven one, we note that the change of use to car park the university with floodlights has now been approved. This is now a six year old application. Now you'll see, but Catherine in red has put the reasoning about the to our conclusions, we're concerned about the interactive traffic in junction of Ford Street to free through London Road highways, that they're satisfied with the visibility, but that we require the access to be improved to back on just standards. Environmental health, brightness of the floodlights, um, had a lighting plan and set times for use of the lights. Um, seven o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock on Monday to Friday, no use at all on the weekends. And finally, the limit to the parking vehicles displayed on Station Road when they constructed, it's obviously not happened, that's not going to hit, so that's been, uh, lapped. Um, everything else is in line with the, we have a ghost or probably a bit of both, but probably withdrawn. That's land adjacent to seventy three London Road. Uh, and until we get down to Brew, the HMO application from twenty five Berladeens Way, change of use from E three house to sixth unit, HMO for six persons. The planning officer went through our objections and eight further objections, uh, most of which were concerning having a third HMO in a small Alvis Act, stroke courtyard, parking problems, bin problems, problems with the neighbourliness, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it was approved because she says, as it was an lawful development certificate, our comments could not be taken into account. Um, they did put one condition on, that's six bedroom, can be no more than six bedrooms and no more than six unrelated um, individuals. If there's more than that, planning permission will be required. Um, six unrelated individuals is because three of the rooms are going to be double rooms, so potentially there could be nine people there, which could mean nine cars. Property has one allocated parking space. So, nothing we can do now, but all we can do, hopefully, if they're listening, is if the residents association up at Berladeen Way is listening, keep an eye on it. Robin?
Thank you, um, Karen, I wonder if it'd be worth a next block two questions, um, because the, I understand, because the committee's points of view, the future HMO, HMO applications, it would be probably worth asking one question. Can we have a copy of the historical, uh, HMO policy? Because you will be aware directly that it was this council, probably the Buckland side, whoever actually wanted to bring in some regulation around it in Buckingham. And then, second question would be, um, is that the policy that is being applied in decisional around HMOs in this area? My concern is that, that Buckinghamshire's changed and we don't know that that is the policy that they're working to. They haven't actually, um, aligned all the planning departments across Buckinghamshire, yeah. So if there's a difference in the policy here, because this policy, when we had it and we went through the long discussions of getting it, was to do with the fact that at that, at the time, was a hell of a lot of student growth in Buckingham, we wanted some sort of regulation over it. And it was for twenty fifteen, twenty thirteen. Lots changed since then, that's not necessarily what we're looking at. So I think it would be worth asking those questions to get the answers and then have a discussion about what we find from that information. Um, not saying anything about it at the moment, but I think it would be prudent to check which, because it would be unfortunate, wouldn't it, if the policy that we're eliminating wasn't a policy that was drafted in conjunction with the concerns that were being raised when it was drafted. We find that our policy is chiltern's HMO policy, where they perhaps haven't got quite the same budget as we have in Buckingham, but they're a different area. Could be nothing, could be that there's one policy and it's the same policy and that's the answer we're getting. We at least understand what we're dealing with, or you'd be dealing with in future applications so that you can make better decisions around that policy.
Robin, so?
I'm just pondering on this issue about car parking and number of bedrooms at a property. Now, if we talk about a three bed house, normally we're talking about three bedrooms and then downstairs would be maybe one or two reception rooms, kitchen, toilet and so on. So there are just three bedrooms. However, in a property that, the same size house, that's become, say, a four or even a five, um, unit, five person unit or an HMO, then effectively you turn the two reception rooms into bedrooms. So in other words, you created a five bedroom house. And therefore, the, the, the parking requirement for a five bed house, it's a requirement for a three bed house. And I just wonder whether there's scope somewhere to use that to say, no, we can't have this because what was there originally was a three bed house. Now it's been turned into a five bed house because of the way in which the whole place is now cooperating. Um, there needs to be adequate parking as a consequence. And I think this is an example of where, of things, where things have gone badly wrong.
I can put this to Catherine, thank you, John.
Um, once you get to both three, the parking requirement doesn't expand. You can have a six bed house with just the three parking spots that are.
Then I think we need to change our legislation. I think we need to be self developed about that.
Um. Robin? I've just come back, the reason I ask or suggest it, that, that, that is because knowledge is power. And, um, I'm not suggesting anything. But I'm suggesting that we need to know what you're up against. Because what you can't do is prejudge any future application. And this isn't about prejudging future application, it's a quick, we're going to ask ourselves to be able to understand the process, the applications in the field that they're going. One is, the question was, are we operating under the historical HMO application, uh, HMO policy? Or are we operating it under another policy? In which case, and can we be given the policy that you're operating under? That's all we need. And at that point, the committee can make a decision based upon the information or there's no decision to be made. But I think you're batting, um, you're pushing water uphill at the moment in all your decisions and it's probably better to understand why you're pushing water uphill.
Thank you all.
As I proposed, we'll never be seconded it, so it won't go anywhere now.
Well, I'm seconding it, yeah, I think we need to.
You are seconding it then?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on that? Then we'll put it to the vote, always in favour? Everybody, including one.
Yeah, I'm not very, not in the case.
Be happy that I pulled it for me, okay, thank you. Good, good, well done. Um, item eleven, representatives from outside the bodies, anyone?
Like to me that?
No.
Seven point two?
Jumped ahead a bit.
Yeah, I've gone over, I've gone over. Yeah, I've gone over two pages.
We should be on seven point two.
Mm-hmm. Well done. Thank you, yeah, I've gone over two pages. So at seven point two now, there's planning inspector, the appeal has been lodged against the refusal of land to western London Road. You're aware of this because last council meeting, we reached a budget of twenty five thousand pounds um, towards fighting this and also protecting the neighbourhood plan and the new plan. Um, I can propose all signage on listed buildings, proposal from councillor Ross. Anthony, okay?
Thank you very much, you know, um. Because Buckingham's got a conservation area, it is, has a slightly more complicated picture perhaps than some, some towns. And certainly when we get curious or anomalous examples of, of decisions by officers, uh, not ours, but the Buckinghamshire Council, I, I think it is quite important to try and understand why that should be and we should be seeking advice a, as a general, a, a general thought. Um, we wanted to provide the best quality decisions we can round this table and we do need that. So therefore, my proposal, which I'm sure you've all read, so I, with respect, I don't plan to read it all out, uh, uh, seeks to do exactly that. And I give a little bit of background and you, I've been very careful to be somewhat anonymous about it, but you know precisely the applications I've used as examples. And so therefore, I invite my colleagues to vote in favour of this proposal.
Thank you, have a second to that. Thank you, Lisa. Robin?
No, it's fine, okay.
Anyone else wish to speak on that? Put that to the vote, always in favour? Thank you, that is everybody. Thank you, Anthony.
My pleasure.
Um, item nine, Buckinghamshire Council matters, received news of Buckingham Council new documents, other information from members present. Anya, Robin?
I've already
You've done your.
In my, uh, done my report, I think I haven't got anything else to add.
Um. One item which you might of the issue regarding this, um, it's become apparent to me that appeals seems to be the flavour of Buckinghamshire Council period. So I thought it was worth digging into quite how many appeals taking place in Buckinghamshire, which are quite a lot. The figures and the money around that was huge. This is the amount of appeals that are ongoing and what they don't do in their answer, where they stay, um. you know, the, they've spent a hundred and seventy two thousand pounds on one appeal and then they stay, and this is public record, so it's fine. Um, and they've spent a hundred and fifty thousand pounds on, um, other appeals and it goes on to three hundred and eighty four thousand pounds on other appeals. So you see there lots of what they're doing. Is that's the appeals cost of when applications don't get agreed in committee. Those appear and they're being challenged by development. What they don't state, because they don't do that, is the officer time on top of that to fight the appeal. Now, this is on the, this is on the portal for the cabinet. So you can read the detail for yourself. I, I mentioned it only because of the discussions around um, the appeal that might, may not be discussed at full council, that appeal. And I figured to know the background, we're looking in. Another element which, um, I think we need to be minded to is what that actually means. And I, I, I am concerned that that the power has shifted away from, um, trying to ascertain how many of these appeals were for councillors objected to applications that then come back to appeal and go on. Now, I think there's some detailing there to that. And how many of them are just appeals when they've gone through with an officer recommendation to do it? So there is a cost to Buckinghamshire council and to the council taxpayers of appeals. Now, I'm not saying don't make an appeal, just be aware that, that your council tax is being paid. And one of the things that concerns me indifferently that maybe not all those appeals were good appeals and that some of the money could have been spent on supporting vulnerable adults and children and such like in Buckinghamshire or do employer planning officers to make sure that the planning applications went through better. So you can make the argument around that. The other thing that I said alluded to uh, um, council, and I said, I gave a bit more detail here. It's like, I was doing a site walk around with, um, one of the ladies, take some time back with Lucy and she asked me loads of questions about the, um, um, St Rumble's estate. So I went away and sort of questioned about it. What we are in situation now, which is much better than we were in our ten year experience of the laid seal development. It appears that the section thirty eights, which apply to internal roads, these are, these are footpaths and roads. They're likely to be working through those section thirty eights and some of them for adoption in the new year. I'm not saying they'll be adopted because they're not snagged. There's after that, where if they're not, it could go back and forwards for quite some time. So that's, we're at an earlier stage of that development we ever were with Leyton, which is even the build out has been better. And that we could say that perhaps that's been more mindful with of that. The other area is the um, two, seven, eight works. I understand that those, I believe, my memory is correct, the works outstanding will be the area of highway between the two sections of roads which have been done, which you'll see down the road. And there's those islands and stuff. There's other works I believe to be done in between. They're likely to be done in the next few weeks. Um, which will be good from the point of view of getting that all one road service out of there. And that's the total work. And then they go through a process there after the twelve months of checking them, like what happened with, you remember when we had all the historical loads of us who were blessed with the situation of the Tesco's roundabout and, um, and all those things, how long that went through, um, appeals and we had a long process of that. Let's not revisit that. Sorry, say repairs, but, um. So that'll go through. So that means that that might mean those roads will be improved through the developer contributions and then we will look at it thereafter. Um, so that's on the planning side. And obviously I attended a planning meeting the other week, which was a rarity with a, um, Buckingham application, which we approved, we discussed it in law, uh, questions. Because it, all the objections that this council had, had gone away. And they'd met some of the conditions. So that was a rare experience. And much enjoyed, um, the, or, or not enjoyed, um, depending on whether you agree with the decision. So when it comes to planning, I think we need to also be minded of the and take a view of what happens is happening with, with, um, how they're processing the applications, getting them through, offered to time. But I am concerned, my personal concern is observing this, listening to conversations and attending meetings is there's free pressures which are on Buckinghamshire council where we can agree that they're dealing with them, whether or not that's not what we're here for. Um, one is the amount of applications they've got to deal with. Two is I'm concerned that the Buckinghamshire plan and, and, and where they are with the agreed sites, we made, um, we've had nothing about what the agreed sites are. You remember that there was the Brownfield sites going out for corporate sites and there was a court sites. There is no definitive map out there. Pro or anti-development showing you where the sites might be. So I think we need to be prepared on that. And the other thing, of course, is whether you, you agree or don't agree with the MPPF. I feel that there will be a discussion around the MPPF. So I think that there's been lots of statements now, but made political statements made about the MPPF. And about the figures of houses in Buckinghamshire. I don't recognise the figures that they're stating. But I think we, as a town council, we need to, or I would suggest the town council needs to, it's taken as a Buckinghamshire council. We need to be very mindful of the information that we get, verify against what the actualities are. And try to understand why, where they are going to sink or land a future Buckinghamshire development plan, because it appears that they're out of sync with the, um, projections of what the government wants to do in plans, the speed that the government wants to move at. Could be they'll be coming together on that issue, whether you agree or don't agree with it, because um, one's got a will to want to develop and the other one isn't in a position to develop. So I think from Buckingham, we're, we hear all about the green belt. We don't have any green belt and, um, and that's a, you can say that's a positive worry or a concern. But remember when they say we don't want any development on the green belt, what that actually means is we don't want any development, but the same amount of houses have to be developed, which means it will be moved further north. So I think that's my view on what I've listened, discussed and whatever. Um, but from this point of view, I think we all need to be very careful that we process any information properly rather than take the latest person shouting. Because I think there's been a lot of shouting so far and no detail. And that's my view for what I've listened. And I, 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 I think, you know, what council decides to do on that is entirely up to town council. Um, but I hope that information's been useful there. That's just planning. I won't go into anything else because it's nothing to do with planning, but there are other things.
Thank you, Robin. Yeah, we've got item thirteen, we'll be on the town and parish quarterly forum, which covers all this anyway. And we've given all the figures, the brown site figures, et cetera, but we don't understand, um, how we treat this. Thank you. Um, any questions throughout Shaw council? Like it could be wanted. Item ten, there's stuff to report of the Buckinghamshire Highway Stick Holders Conference, which Anthony and myself attend this town council. It's Robin is there as a Shaw councillor. Um, there's a lot of information in there, but parking took up a lot of the conferences, you could probably imagine. Um, and the parking officer, uh, Julie, the Rushden Parking Services, basically reported that Buckinghamshire council has ten thousand nine hundred and ninety eight off street parking bays serviced by two hundred and seventy three machines. We were told the intention is to keep
One of the works.
We were told the intention is to keep cash payment machines going as long as possible, but they're labour intensive and not cost effective. Ticket paper running out is the most common reason for putting a machine out of use. Um. Each year there'll be free Christmas shopping parking for two days across the county. Each community board area would be offered an additional two days free parking to use as they wished. Um. Those of you who are eagle-eyed will notice that four days is not enough, but we have two days of the fair, we have we want our two Christmas days and we have the member's Sunday. So, Andy, first.
I've already written to Steve Broadbent to point out these very points. Um, but also the fact that I hadn't fully picked up yet. So thank you for mentioning that this is for a community board area. The new community board will include Winslow. Yeah. So, so that is one day for Winslow and one day for us.
Thank you.
John, what else? Yeah, I think this standard routine by Miss Rushden sounds terrible. Um, I wish I'd been there for that. Um, but I would say this does give me the opportunity to highlight um, uh, a message put out by councillor Darren Blamiers in the last week or so. Saying that in Winslow, they have managed somehow to negotiate a reduction of one pound for parking on Sundays. Um, I've yet to see this actually validated by an official source, but it appears to have I imagine it must have something, otherwise she will be out there saying it was the case. I guess the question must be, how? How's that come about? And what are we as town, the town council doing about that? Um, and, uh, well, we'll see what, see what emerges, I guess.
I may sound corrected, but understand Winslow has an arrangement with Buckinghamshire council whereby the town council does pay for part of the parking.
Well, at least I have.
That is for grey friars as opposed to the towns, to the market square. But I am not in a position to comment on exactly the meaning of councillor Blamiers', um, social media posts, but I think one of the issues was around the access to St Lawrence Church where people parked on the town square. So I think that was one of the comments there, which is different from our car parks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. And I do have one hundred first one. Thanks. Um, yeah, when I read about the, uh, community board area, uh, that worried me. Because it, it's almost like we're not being given responsibility of giving forward our days. Um, why is a community board more important than, than our voice when it comes to having free parking days? I think that any day that we put forward is totally relevant and is needed. So I, I just, I didn't understand the marrying up there of why we would be thought of in that, in the same way.
Okay. I could have thought, Anthony, I don't recall anyone asking about that at the stakeholders meeting.
No.
Um, thank you, Mark. Um, so I had a conversation with councillor Howard Maudie on Sunday um, regarding the Winslow car parking, um, reduction seventy p. Um, he said to me um, that it will only be till next March because it's a, it's a pre-existing arrangement that, um, Winslow had with AVDC. Um, and therefore, and that runs out in March. So, um, apparently, um, so councillor Maudie tells me that will then stop.
Thank you for the information.
He's done his research.
I'm glad that, I hope that the Maudie will make a Facebook post to that effect, um, but I doubt it, Bama. Not his style, no. Um, but thank you for that information. I think it does resonate, it does resonate with what happened because there historically we had the discussions here in Buckingham and they were having their discussions in Winslow. The chair referred to they were different things. That does make sense that they would run out at some time. When it comes to the discussing around car parking, there is a issue which we need to discuss. Um, at some point in, in town centre events because of the long term planning of that. What it shows you is the idea that four is enough. If there wasn't Sunday parking charges, four would be enough, wouldn't it? Because you wouldn't have the remembrance Sunday to think about. So, um, that's a big question.
I'm fine, John.
I'm fine, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, you know, I think that they don't have any concept to understanding of how big the calendar of events is in Buckingham.
Yeah.
Um, what we've actually invested greatly over a number of years to actually boost our economy. And all the actions with the parking charges and changes seem to be running contrary to that.
Yeah.
Now, I did attempt today to, um, um, get that discussed, but appeared we're not able to discuss that until, um, a later day. That's a different discussion. Um, so I think that, you know, we are here as elected members to discuss each thing. And I think we do need to have a discussion around where we think about it, because we have a business interest in it. We are a business in Buckingham. Um, we run the markets, which is a business. And we are a business, um, who will be affected by any of these changes. And whether we agree or can't agree with it, I find it equally um, it is to be deaf to believe that the organisation that doesn't, um, being the Buckinghamshire council, doesn't even run any of these events, organise of the market, do any of the road closures in the town for things like the Christmas parade stuff and all these sort of things that we do, cause information, would have a group of people who have no understanding about that, decide on which days that we, and which events are most important. So I think that that's just a one size fits all Buckinghamshire council process again.
Yeah.
So I do think that we need to, as a, you know, have a discussion. I think that it needs to go through the events committee and discuss it around the budget and the events and see where we actually get in. I did try to get it on the agenda, but I failed. And, um, and, um, so we'll have to think some other ways to discuss it. Um, but I'm sure I'll find that.
Robin, one of the things I would propose tonight, you've done it, is that we send this report, my report to the town central events committee.
Yeah.
It's more your remit.
I think, I thank both you for having the patience to sit through that. I was fortunate that my phone kept ringing and I could go outside and actually take telephone calls. Um, which was a, a light relief for me.
Look, I'll leave you with this, with this, uh, final comment from Miss Rushden, parking, we will support.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Right, we.
Just, uh, there were not, there weren't any other road facilities in the county apart from we've, that's, don't know if all the roads and the White Hart street regeneration in the middle of High Wycombe, uh, although eight four two one stakeholder conference has been called twenty eighth of November at National Hall. It's a year late after the November twenty three one was cancelled. Um, Buckingham Town Council will again be represented. Um, so I'll be going back. So cats are up at my chair and I'm sure Robin will be there.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
It's a long way to travel to Nashville.
Um. I'm, I don't know whether Annie has been invited. There's a
I've been invited.
There's a members meeting, um, is it this week?
Oh, it's a fucking west one, then maybe not.
Well, you should have been invited. It's the eight four two one, do you not?
Oh, yes, in fact.
What, I, what, what day was it on, Annie? It's just that we may get an early, um, view of what we're in for.
Oh, yes, yeah, I'm not behind it.
Um, that was, um.
Could you pass it out after meeting?
No, what, what I was trying to say is that, but, um, is that, I forget it, which day?
Not this week.
It's not, that's, that's fortunately.
Okay.
Next week.
It's next week. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for your report. I'm broken here.
Just to make sure you're there, really.
Um, so I can have it. So, Dan.
We do sometimes get a bit down amongst the weeds here, but when are they going to repair the car parking meters? I mean, I've just listened to, I mean, it's fascinating and I'm Julie Rushden, poor machine.
What, what's announced that the
When are they going to repair the car park? Because there are so many people wanting a
They've got to be replaced, not that, that we were told.
Replaced, yes.
There's only a ten life, a ten year life normally for these machines. Ours are now past that. I'm sure they are replacing at the moment. I've seen from Elsbury Facebooks that Elsbury's going to be next and hopefully Buckingham.
A tide coming up towards Buckingham, is it?
Or probably stop when they get to Winslow.
But we, so we don't know when they're going to be replaced yet, but.
Well, they didn't actually say they were replacing, but they said it was a work in progress.
That's the sort of thing I'd like to see, you know, if, if councillor Satchbury or councillor Schaefer are in places of hire here, they could actually, you know, stir the table on that one.
Robin?
I am, I drafted something today on these very subjects. I've got to see if it's um, grammatically correct enough, Jane, and, um, and, and not insulting enough that it will get through, um, the, um, earthworm people who check my correspondence in legal and democratic services. I've got a feeling it may take them some time to go through it. Um, and, um, pull out the pet from the pigeon. Um, and the question, but I am trying to work towards that. I hope that I'll be in a position within November to get some clarity. I hope that I'll be in a mission within November to get some clarity, because, um. We've got that, we have a second goal at it, uh, which is council, but councils not only is that science anymore. Um, the question that council seems to be limited to a, almost a slight breeze. Um, and, um, and, and there's no, um, anyone who wants to ask the important version of it.
Such, but councillor Mordy, Howard has also written, I'm sure, practically every round this table has, but can we just keep up the pressure?
No, I, I explain where I'm going, what I'm doing.
I think we should commit a, a, a dramatic company to do a production waiting for those.
I'm going to Cav. Going to Cav.
Unfortunately, the security, um, gates, the gateway, the priority of people wanting to pass.
I got confused by them.
Yeah, thank you.
Have them on Wednesday.
But item eleven, updates from representatives outside bodies, do we have anybody? No, thank you. I control action reports. Uh, what I will report to you. Is on Westend Farm, which Robin has been leading on all this time. Network Archaeology have completed their recording of the skeletons found at Westend Farm within February twenty nineteen. They currently were waiting on a date to come back, which will hopefully tie the story together and provide some. Firm dating evidence possibly from the. There's still waiting for DNA analysis to be completed. As it stands, the working theory that this was a gallows site. Likely of late Roman or early medieval age date. All the identifiable, identifiable remains are male and between early teens and older age. There's no obvious signs how they died, although several show signs of having lived a hardly. Very harsh, right? Several examples of ill formers and downlissies. Our archaeology officer is going to visit the network archaeology societies this week. And we'll take the opportunity to inspect the remains and discuss the next steps. Robin, thank you very much for the answer. To get into this problem.
I, I have to say that they're a good team, and they're working really well with their resources, so. I think that we're lucky that they've been so deep. I do see lots of discussions about bones with me. Um, um, because it's one of the things that interests me.
It's like when you go and say, can I pick a bone with it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I, I have to say, and it, um, look, we have been, you know, they have, they have. You know, when we started this journey together, we were nowhere, were we? And we've got, within the few years, we've managed to get to where we are, and it's been really complicated. So it looks like we may get the closure on the story. And it could be that then they're either being sent to the crossover to the Roman. And Anglo-Saxon period, which is quite a, um, a, a, a very historic part of our life in Buckingham. But I'm still concerned that any of them relate to me. Um, so I'm waiting for the DNA to come back. To see where we were hung and thrown in the ditch. But, um, but it, I'm not going to kid it, it is marvellous, but. I think it'll be something that when it comes out, maybe we'll work together with the, the. I hope we'll work together with the archaeological people to try and tell some story around this. Um, Buckingham's night and whatever, because it's a bigger story for Buckingham, really.
Museum, old jar.
You know, and maybe they'll lend us a skull, you know, we can bring it back.
The gall, the gallows site, there is, has some.
Probably handle it as well.
There's a similar site that's found in Andover, in Portway, if you believe the mile from where I lived before I came, moved up here.
And they're following you around.
But what they have in common is on the parish boundaries. So normally the executed would be buried. Either on or just outside the parish boundary. Um, and this, of course, Western Farm is on the boundary, so. With, with that's really just a matter of reports at the moment, because.
I, I thank the officer anyway, so, but she knows our keenness.
Other action reports, we're still awaiting the tri-officer to come back about priority habitat trees being removed at Ozil Way. Uh, we're waiting responses. Catherine points out that runs out next month, in six months, there are. Um, yellow lines in very close market hill and the different fleece yard. Um, the local, L A T is saying, uh, that all statements from Media Works must be completed. Um, like for like, but that was way back in, um, later goodness. But they, they are aware of that. Scable parking, see Catherine's photograph there, um, photographs are taken at the end of September. The new raised levels are draining, but inter foot path there, it's got nowhere else to go. And finally, um, we've been looking into the status of cottages at Lember Road, including the local heritage list, that's ongoing. And we have formulated submitted a false review which was completed and sent. Um, finally, we made a complaint about the offensive for bucks sake, signs of the towns. Complaint was made and has been advised, but we are awaiting a response. Still.
Well, Buckingham say that they may actually get one.
Anyone else on the actions?
Um, there was a previous meeting to look at, um, bringing more advice on prejudicial interest. Um, and sorry it's taken so long to come back to you, but I certainly had a brainstorm. And all those, that information is complete, it contained in the, um, code of conduct for capitalists. I'm sure members will have had a quote here on our website, and was last agreed off for council on the thirteenth of May, so it'll be in there. Um, the agenda attachments for that as well, if anybody wants permission copy. Um, of course, we can provide it, or, um, councillor Alan might share his copy, which I gave him the other day.
Love it.
Uh, he comes here as a report from the clerk. I can add very little to the, um, in-depth investigation that she's done. Um, members, I'm sure, would have read through it already.
Yep.
Um, because in view of what she's found out, she's given us from a recommendation that, um. We don't pursue, um, any policy to relax.
Well, that, that of course comes up, that's the next one.
Tell the next side some.
Yep.
There we go, perfect.
So, thank you. No other comments on that. So twelve two is to receive action, to receive a briefing note from the town clerk. On whether personal heat pumps should be allowed, that's, uh, on your agenda. Her recommendation is that members do not pursue a policy of encouraging a relaxation. Around the rules regarding planning permission requirements for heat pump installation in English, which is given all the reasons.
I'm very pleased that that conclusion came to that conclusion. Um, yes, I, I think they're great things, but there needs to be a certain level of scrutiny around them. End of conversation. Nice.
Thank you. Um, this is a recommendation which, um, we can have a proposal for.
I propose we.
Thank you, Martin, secondly for that. Thank you, Andy. Um, so the recommendations I've just read are, all those in favour? Um, sent to you, Anthony, I can't see. No, no, sorry, all those in favour? Three, count those three, please.
Um, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, let's say that.
Abstentions. Two abstentions. Um, if we could accept your recommendation, thank the town clerk for the work he's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, town and parish court is four meeting. Um, you've all seen the slides from this meeting. It did include information on a number of appeals on brownfield sites. Robin mentioned, I did ask a question at the meeting, I can tell you. Yeah, um, my question was about calling this committee of planning applications, and I've said. Buckinghamshire Council constitution is specific in its planning committee procedure rules. That the service director and chairman, or vice chairman in his absence, will determine whether or not to call in an application. But we're seeing more and more determined by the service director, chairman and the vice chairman. Um, if the constitution has been changed to give three people, not two delegated authority, please inform. Uh, when and by whom. I asked that on the fourteenth of October. And Darren Eggleton said he'd reply, and I had not yet heard a month later. So could we put that on the next action list? And in the meantime.
Yeah.
Perhaps write to Darren Eggleton, let us ask whether we might expect an answer. Yeah, thank you. We'd love to debate on that, Steve, if it's, if it's agreeable, thank you, Catherine. Any questions on the, uh, slides? Any actions? It's basically what they tell us each time, we have to listen.
Yeah.
Robin?
One minute. Judging by the structure of your meeting, you tended here, there, was it? There's an awful structure where they kept you into your chairs for about so many hours. And then gave you about a limited amount of time to ask questions, so that you couldn't really get involved in the. Subject matter that you've been discussing. Was it the same format?
No.
It was better than that.
Yeah, there's only, only be their questioning, it's right at the start of the meeting, they gave it all the time I wanted.
That's brilliant. How do you manage that? We just can't get that service in Buckinghamshire. I mean, I'm there all day.
I did leave on the two minutes that they normally give you, but no, no, it was very relaxed.
No, it's just that I found the structure of that meeting, both went through earlier with the.
Maybe that is late on the agenda, Robin, thank you. Um, so if there's no questions or any actions coming from that part. The last one for Eggleton, will we get a reply? Um, item fourteen, Buckinghamshire Council committee meetings. Um, one on the second of October was cancelled, sixth of November had one application, that was. My source heat pump, because it was a staff member and they had to go through, uh, the proper procedures. We had no objection to it and no tendency necessarily. It was approved. Um, strategic sites committee, the twenty fourth of October, one was cancelled. Members like to know that is the fifth in a row to be cancelled. Um, fourteen three, growth, infrastructure and housing selection committee will be held on the twenty first of November. Fourteen four, Robin has just mentioned the transport, environment, climate change select committee, which I attended. I had four agreed questions to submit, we're only allowed to submit one. Apparently, only one person is allowed to ask the question. So if we take four people, we could have done this.
Wow.
Um, anyway.
Right, double project. We'll go to the next one.
So.
Yeah.
I have a mini-butt.
Yeah, I'll be as brief as I can, but my question basically was what flood prevention, protection and mitigation is being considered for North Bucks? The river Great Ouse and its many tributaries, which frequently inundate Buckingham and the surrounding villages. I draw attention to the two thousand two plan to put tanks up at Waters Stratford and Bang Clyde, but it costs a million pounds. It never happened. There was no money coming from the National Club Defence Budget due to the balance between costs and benefits. Buckingham then flooded in two thousand and seven. The Environment Agency reconsidered the scheme and began looking for funding from the local flood defence lobby. But there has been a series of flooding, uh, and these events are no longer one in hundred years. As the Environment Agency has previously insisted, there have been four such serious events in Buckingham in the past seventeen years. And the flooding review specifically mentioned the increased flood risk in the north of the county. And Elsbury Bay is shown as the area with the highest additional risk of flooding in future years due to climate change. My question was, will the thinking behind the current allocation of flood relief monies be revisited in the light of these projections? Uh, councillor Thomas Brew, who is the cabinet member for flooding, paying back, said there is a number of complex issues affecting flooding in Buckingham. The primary one is the Great Ouse, which is the responsibility of the Environment Agency. The two thousand and two scheme I was talking about, or you were talking about, and the monies allocated were all on the national side. We're putting together as much information as we can to help in core planning projects, uh, working with the Environment Agency. We find a change in the increased precipitation is to the forefront of our mind, and there's weather patterns change, but the best thing we can do is respond to that. Not only internally, but with our partners, so they have quicker and better protect people whose homes are at risk. I appreciate the question, as, as we have a detailed, lengthy response, we will read it into the minutes and reply to you as well. And chairman councillor Bill Chapel said, we all recognise that one in a hundred years event is no longer realistic. It's more like one in ten, which the figures we now have. But to change that thing internationally means a lot more money is going to have to be found, flood defences. But that was basically it. Um, this afternoon, when I got back too late to. Um, bring to you all, um, three pages from Chris Ward, which is his response, that we'll have to. I think probably the best thing we can do is to circulate those to members as, as a very detailed and quite quick response about everything we asked about. Um, Fran, good point.
Thank you very much. Um, I think we all know that, um, the, the, um, huge amounts of our flooding issues are not from the Great Ouse. Um, um, I don't think people who, whose houses flood on Western Avenue is from the Great Ouse. I don't think, um, people whose houses were flooded on Midway was from the Great, Great Ouse. Um, there's, there's all sorts of issues. Buckinghamshire Council would be, um, um. Advised, I think, to, um, remember that they are riparian owners of a lot of watercourses around here. Um, and they need to be taking their responsibilities, um, seriously. And, um, and actually doing something about it. Um, the bottom of, um. Nelson Street on the corner there, it's known, and it's been known for over twelve months, well over twelve months. There's a, um, a collapsed culvert under there. Um, the, the flooding that affects. Um, has affected the bungalow, um, on Mitre Street. That is because there is a collapsed culvert there, and that's been known about for well over two years, if not longer than that. Um, it is an absolute travesty that they are just blaming the Ouse on it. I'm sorry, oh, sorry. I'll be quiet now.
I would just make the point, it's not just the Great Ouse, but it's many tributaries, and they acknowledge that as well. You said there's a lot of brooks and, um, streams which aren't the Great Ouse, which contribute to the flooding, as well of course.
But it's, 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 it's lack of maintenance of, of, of James and Colfrance and, and my girls.
I thought you were in full.
Service running, sorry.
Yeah, just to report, really, to the meeting, um, at the last county board, um, meeting, I asked the question. Given the report that was produced after the twenty twenty flooding, was produced by consultants, but under the, under the auspices of the. Shire Council, who is actually monitoring the actions that will put in the report to see whether they're being done or not? Uh, Sarah Turnville, who was president of the meeting, who's the new service director, strategy improvements and governance. And the adder's in health director, it's, I'm not quite sure what her relevance is here, but anyway, she, she agreed to, to take that forward. Um, she then emailed me asking for the copy of the report, and also specifically what the question was. I got an email from her today, uh, and I think Howard was copied in, as was Jane Dimmer and Alice Williams. Just to say, just to give you, just to give you an update on the email below. I have requested to the flooding team that they produce an update and provide to the community board on the report recommendations. They are happy to do so, and I'm working on this. I don't have any time schedules right now and so on. So at least somebody now is actually looking at that report and saying, that action was done, that has been done, that's underway. Which is what should have been happening for a long, given it's at least two years since that report was produced. So watch this space, and once I have that thought, I'll make sure it's discussed with the community as well. Thank you for that, John. That, Jane, you're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely agree with what Fran's saying here, but, um, on at least, I mean, it seems to be done on a, on a. Drainage by, you know, drain by drain basis. And, um, so I remember councillor Howard Mordy taking me for a walk, let's go down Well Street, Jane, one, one morning, and it was the. A terrible smell coming from outside the carpet shop where the guy had been complaining about it. And you're in due course, you know, Howard, hopefully spoke to somebody, got it fixed. And then there was another blocked drain, so, so I'm running the church, which he got fixed. And I'm sure that everyone around this table is also doing the same thing for constituents, is getting drains fixed. But it seems to me that we, you know, having individual councillors spending a lot of time getting drains fixed. It wouldn't it be better if we could encourage a programme? I mean, I know we do have. Eighteenth century, nineteenth century infrastructure here, that's across our country. But wouldn't it be better, there could be some sort of programme which, um, which addresses, because there are still some very stinky smells. When you walk around the town, anyway, that's my.
In fact, the Highway Stakeholders Conference, they very proudly told us that they, um. They were able to clean fifty thousand gullies already this year. Don't mention culverts, gullies. And they said, oh, that, that solves a lot of the problems about roads flooding. Robin?
Yeah. I think, you know, good luck with the, um, Thomas, um, I wrote to him in July twenty third, I wrote up to him on a matter. Um, I wrote to him on, or the eighth of December, and October, and I wrote to him um at least in October, following from a question I asked the previous cabinet member and the deputy cabinet member, this is to do with the Great River Ouse and issue around it. Now, I mean, that's gone on for all quite eighteen months, not one of them's managed to visit North Buckinghamshire yet. I even offered them an account of something in that I'd provide sandwiches and beer if they were willing to collect. And even the offer of sandwiches and beer wasn't enough to get them out of South Buckinghamshire. Um, and it's all on the webcast and I cut it out prosperity, no, it's got well there, no, it's going. So, um, I just worry me because I do think it's very difficult to get the focus around the issues with the Great Ouse, which they are almost unresolvable because of the amount of water that goes into the Ouse and whatever. Councillor Davis is absolutely right when she says about addressing the historical areas which feed into the Ouse and the the drainage system not working, which means the flooding takes away away from the river. Um, and Jane makes a good point in the individual councillors and then just go around trying to get things done. And there doesn't seem to be a strategy, or we haven't got a strategy to, if they were to say that we're going to allocate this to Buckingham and we know that we're going to do F, Y, Z, we could at least turn to the residents who are affected that say they've got a programme to do it. But there is no programme and it's it's a it's an uphill struggle for councillors to get interest in this matter and then to get further addressed to it. Now, there's a crossover which in this, which the Midway one crosses over into this committee's territory. You will recall that we all sat here and um raised the issues with the Ozy Way, the chairman went to the meeting in the Ozy Way development and we raised various issues about the drainage and stuff at the Ozy Way. And then we said, when it come through, it there was a a failed attempt to try and get the specific detail plans, which is the second stage to committee, because the original part was done in the strategic development committee and then all the other bits seem to be done in the area planning committee. So we can't get those called in because we wanted to get to discuss the drainage and the sewage of them. Um, which is still, to best my knowledge, unresolved. Um, where.
Just to correct, Rob, and the reserve matters were done by delegated authority.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to.
Not in a.
No, I asked it to go to committee, it was done by delegated. I was told that discussing the drainage of that site was not substantive enough for it to be discussed by the members. So where we go with this? Because it it it's the whole picture of the town, isn't it? It's the whole picture of drainage, how sewage works, how local people, like I said, have knowledge that can influence good decisions. If you don't get a chance to actually put that into a discussion, they're missing out. Because I think everyone round here is tables on the same side when it comes to. So I think it's how we get to the process and the choices we've made by Fran and by Jane, and they're very much the same point, that there's no plan. This doesn't seem to be where it is. So how we get to a plan at this late stage of the evolution of the first elected term of Buckinghamshire Council? Um, heaven knows, because if they haven't got a plan by the end of year um four, will they have one by the end of year five, six, seven, eight? Um, I don't know.
Well, I have a suggestion that we circulate that select committees respond to my questions and at the next meeting we have an item where we consider that.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. I think it's very wise.
A very, yeah, okay.
We will meantime circulate the flooding report to go with, which includes my question to go with the response.
It's not just Buckinghamshire Council who haven't got any money, but it's other other parts as well, as obviously the bigger.
Environment Agency are really smart to think about.
Yeah.
Now, Robin Coates, we need to move on.
Just say they don't get bought off by the Environment Agency argument, they have statutory responsibilities by Terry Knowles and and Brock, you know.
They're just to report that the whole entire flooding review report was accepted by the um select committee. Um, and it were two recommendations, one was the recommendation that all the water companies should become statutory consultants in planning applications. The other, which was specifically Buckinghamshire, um was that the planning service must give appropriate weight to comments made by water companies in at-risk areas regarding sewage capacity during the planning consultation phase, including any comments on the capacity of sewage treatment plants. And of course, that immediately comes back to the warm-up ride made small for application and our own Ozy Way, which we raise the same issues. Um, that report then will be sent to the cabinet for ratification hopefully, but I I we will come back to the next planning meeting with that. Thank you, Robin.
Did they give a timeframe when they think that will go?
No.
Is it unlike other select committees, there isn't really difficult, you can look at a select committee and see what their work programme is. You can't do that with cabinet.
It wasn't mentioned, but it's that it'd be forwarded to the cabinet for ratification. Thank you. Um, enforcement to report any new breaches, anyone have any concerns, breaches and we can't, no, Robin?
Yeah, I hope that we could have a low key discussion around this. Um lay-by on the A four two one, which you would all be aware of when you come past the Tindret Road junction. Um, historically, it was open, there was beyond it. And historically, it was what went on there never really got any um interest now.
Are we going into Buckingham or out of Buckingham?
We're going into Buckingham and Tindret, it's on that side. Um.
For God.
No.
No, Tindret Road.
I was trying to say there wasn't any properties there, which was a clue, it's um St Rumbold's. What's happening there now is that people that stop there aren't actually doing themselves any credit um when they relieve themselves. And um and behind that hedge now are properties and people living in those properties. I I I I think that we need to, and also there's rubbish and stuff creeping through the hedge. So I think that it would be worth raising it as an enforcement issue, as they said that they've got cameras that monitor the fly tipping and specifically it goes through the hedge. Now, today I had a long conversation with a parent over that and I took some, made it people aware of where it is and what it is, but this is the town council meeting. And we were involved in it, so I think, without going into too graphic a detail, would it be possible just to ask that we report that we have concerns about the activities in that lay-by? And I will give a note of what I think they are, the town clerk, without saying it in a public meeting.
Just before we proceed on that, there is case law on this now, the A forty one at Thelma Hempstead. A man was fined by decorum by a council for leaving himself.
Yeah.
They then went to a.
Public decency, isn't it?
It was raised raised by barristers and um they said, no, it's not littering.
No, no piddling, please.
That's a good point, though, we should raise it anyway, yes.
Because it's a cause of offence to the children, the young girls on the other side of the fence.
Which is exposing, so what would you what would you be proposing?
I suppose, no, I. We have no powers to do anything. All I'm saying is that we raise it as an enforcement issue with enforcement to ask them to look at it and assess what's going on there, if we have grave concerns, it is not in public interest. I don't think we have any powers to do that. We haven't seen anything ourselves, but we're aware that there is activities going on there with my thoughts, whatever, there also is litter going in there, so they've got this advert for Buck's sake. Well, perhaps they could for Buck's sake get on and do something about it. Um.
John? Well, just speaking up on this, I mean, I, uh, some years ago now, well before St Rumbold's was being built, um the amount of rubbish there was just appalling. And I remember photographing it and highlighting it, even the councillors saying, why in the heart of Buckinghamshire not put bins in their lay lines the way that oxygen does? Um, and well, zero response, really, as I expected. But I think if we want to do a serious, you know, a serious um um prevention, offensive activity, the Shire Council really ought to be providing bins in regularly used um uh facilities like this, because people will leave rubbish. I think it's disgusting, I don't know why they can't sleep in their tower and take it over with them, but they don't. And at least if there was a bin there, people would actually maybe, um, you know, um.
We could report that as social behaviour, that covers everything.
Well, yeah, I'd say get the police involved as well, to be honest. I'd say this will be the least it's happened.
Littering is not a police matter, because you'll be aware Buckinghamshire Council since July is now imposing heavy fines on anyone who catches.
Well, if if people are exposing themselves, that is that is an illegal matter, that is a police matter. And for all we know, there might be men doing it um who are masquerading as having a baby, but actually are not. You know, we, you know, we're like, that's a very serious crime, there should be.
I was trying to.
It's often a gateway crime to worse kinds of sexual offences.
So would you be happy if we raised concerns about litter? About litter and antisocial behaviour?
Yeah.
Yeah, and potentially illegal behaviour.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
That is very antisocial.
It's more than antisocial, that's very clear, it's more than antisocial.
I'm interested, Fran?
Um, I just found I found an article here, more than seven hundred drivers have been fined for urinating in a single lay-by by a busy old road near King's Langley in one year. Um, and therefore been fined eighty eight pounds.
Absolutely, that case has been.
Um.
Tell the council it might be an income generation.
Catherine does have a note, are there any other matters? Thank you for raising.
Thank you for the score on that.
Um, item sixteen, rolling list updates, pre-filling applications, land ground reports, calling requests and high road licence updates still awaited, but they're all on the appendices attached to the agenda. Martin?
Just on the HMOs, we've heard about um St Bernadine's, it's licensed for six. I see the note at the bottom of the list saying that you know, the number there quoted is not necessarily what it's licensed for. Would it be helpful if we had the number that it was licensed for as another column, not, you know, as we as we learn about them?
I am awaiting those figures. I went in to get the updated figures to find that they have completely vanished on the website. So I complained and she said, no, 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 and then she said, yes. Well, you can use it, but meanwhile I will send you a list, but she hasn't yet.
Oh, I thought she was going to ask you to send her a list so she can update it.
Thank you, Martin, that is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the quest. Karen?
Just on the HMOs in the list there, it doesn't include what I think is an HMO and I think they apply for it in St Rumbold's Lane.
Oh, number nine?
Yes, exactly.
Um, I think it's because it's under the number required for licensing. But when I when I get Jackie's new list, I will bring it.
Yeah, there is a minimum number.
Three point two is that.
The maximum number over which you don't have to apply for the licence.
Yeah, I think it's two, you can have two.
Catherine's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Any other? Second, item seventeen, matters to report, damage, surplus, redundant signage in the town, access issues, other hidden matters. Hmm. Thank you. Eighteen is chairman's items, information I have now. Um, dates of the next meeting, Monday, the seventh of December, following interim might like to note that January meeting will follow all councils, so.
And then there's another one, just for Christmas in December.
Right, that will be.
That's the one article.
That's the one answers to back-to-back meetings, so.
And then January one, and then we get another September, then we February.
Right, so those will be truncated planning committee meetings, so.